From KUOW in Seattle, welcome to Soundside and welcome to our City Council Position Nine Debate. Thank you, everybody, for showing up for this live debate in the KUOW studios. So we have two candidates running to represent the city of Seattle and one of our two citywide council seats. And 2026 is going to be a big year for this council. We've got a looming budget deficit, potential federal funding cuts, the continuous threat of, you know, federal troops potentially being sent to our fair city. First up, a familiar name, incumbent Sarah Nelson was elected to the Position Nine seat in 2021. She's the City Council President and co-founder of Fremont Brewing. Welcome, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you.
And next to her, her opponent, Dion Foster, former Executive Director of the nonprofit Progress Alliance of Washington, which advocated for a statewide capital gains tax. Foster is also a former policy adviser for the city. Welcome, candidate Foster.
Thank you for having me.
And thank you, everybody. Welcome our candidates. So before we get started, we're going to go over a few rules for the debate. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer a question tailored to them. For most questions, they will then, their opponent will then have 45 seconds for a rebuttal or a response. If during a rebuttal, they make a specific claim about their opponent, either by name, or my colleague said, or my, the person over to my left or my right said, you will then be seeing another 30 seconds for response from those candidates. There will also be a lightning round designed for very brief, one-word answers at the end. These debates move quickly. We are designing them for busy voters. And there's a clock located right at the back of the room to help keep track of time. If they go over their limit, candidates might hear something like this. Or this. Or maybe this. All right, that is a Washington State ferry horn, of course, one of our fine seagulls and a local crow. They all love the clock, so they like us to keep on target. We will not be doing opening statements today, but candidates will get one minute at the end for closing remarks. Ready to get started? Everybody good?
Yes.
Great. So I want to start with a question from a listener who referenced recent reporting by KUW and ProPublica that for over a year, Seattle paid for dozens of hotel rooms as homeless shelter spaces that then sat empty at the Civic Hotel. David wrote in to say, quote, "We have seen homelessness grow despite millions spent to address it, with news that the city paid for a hotel space, for a hotel space for homeless people that was not even used. I would like to know how the next council will address homelessness and what proven effective solutions will be used while also spending efficiently." We'll start with Council President Nelson. Your response, 90 seconds for David.
I understand that the frustration behind that question, because I was frustrated to learning that. The, the problem with our homelessness response is that we've got the King County Regional Homelessness Authority and a city response, and we need to make sure that the, that both agencies are working together or that they're filling different needs. And the fact is that we are not tracking, what is, there is no real-time list of the, of the spaces that are available when outreach workers go out to try to help people get inside. And so this is a, this is an area of much-needed improvement. And I have been pushing, pushing, pushing to make sure that we are not wasting the public's money on resources while people are sleeping outside. And so I was surprised to hear about that particular case, but that's not going to keep happening again. And I do serve on the, the King County Regional Homelessness Authority Board, and we're asking some very hard questions about the viability of that organization.
And you have 30 seconds. Do you want to add anything else about homelessness response and what you, yeah, would, would like to see happen?
Sure, there, there is a story behind that particular location. And I understand that there's a dispute between the organization that was responsible for the people that were staying there and the hotel owner. But the fact is that the studies show that the best responses, the cities that are dealing with their homelessness problem, the best are those that are getting people into shelter right now. It doesn't have to be permanent supportive housing. We're spending a lot of money purchasing buildings, building buildings when we need to get people off the streets, out of those inhumane conditions and, and give them the tools to get their lives back together. And a lot of times that requires some treatment, addiction treatment.
Thank you. I asked you to keep going, and then you get seagull. You know what? All that, that one's on me. Dion Foster, are there more cost-effective solutions that you think the city could be pursuing that you would like to introduce as a council member? You have 45 seconds for this response.
Yeah, when I look at our, our homeless system, one of the things that I think is really important that we do is work to get more shelter capacity online. I actually live close to a site that has been trying to come online for about two years now. It's a city-owned property. So one of the things that I want to be able to do on council is actually review our process for, for citing things like tiny homes. This is a tiny home village that a community organization has been trying to get cited, and they have just been going back and forth, back and forth with the city. And we need to actually make it easier to do that so that we can have places for people to go. And especially so that we can have places that are non-congregate shelter, because we know that when folks are offered those, that you're going to see a higher uptake of non-congregate shelter options like tiny homes. So I think it's about making sure that we are focusing on expanding our shelter capacity in addition to having strong oversight. And I think we have to say oversight, oversight, oversight.
The seagull loves oversight. So there seems to be a consensus at the political level that we need alternatives to police in order to deal with serious mental health crises, substance use, and homelessness issues on Seattle streets. But a recent report by the Seattle Times detailed ways that street-level officers, police officers, and the police union have allegedly been undermining Seattle's Community Assistant Response and Engagement, or CARE, department. Journalist David Croman found that officer requests for a care provider to be dispatched to a person down reportedly plummeted in late 2024, closely following an alleged claim from a union representative that CARE would be disbanded in 2025. In one month this year, Care Chief Amy Barden counted 70 incidents of officers canceling care dispatches or closing a scene before CARE arrived. Mayor Harrell doubled the number of CARE responders funded in his recent budget proposal, but that will require a new agreement with the police union. This question goes first to you, Dion Foster. Without police buy-in, is CARE doomed? And should the city move on to other ideas? What's the solution here? 90 seconds.
Thank you. I believe that our CARE department, which is our third public safety department, is a critical part of how we actually move forward as a city and build a city that is really safer for everyone. One of the things that I believe we need to do is get to a place where the CARE team can actually be dispatched without being co-dispatched with SPD. So that means that the CARE responders would be able to take a phone call and go out and respond without needing to wait for a co-responder with SPD. When I first started campaigning, one of the first things I did was go on a ride along with the CARE team. And it is so clear to me that those folks are highly skilled. We are talking about some people who are former child resource workers, former police officers themselves, people who have done really hard things and helped connect people with services. So for them to be able to do their job well, we need to make that change. So I think we are starting to move in the right direction with the idea of putting more resources into that department. But we also need to make sure that they can do the job that they were intended to do by allowing them to respond on their own. We have instances of them already doing those responses without SPD. They can do something called an onsite when they're already out in the community, if they see someone who looks like they need their support. So we have instances of them being able to provide those services to people in a way that is safe. The other thing that we need to do is make sure that the CARE team actually has access to up-to-date information. They told me they, one of the folks I went out with said, you know, I carry this sort of green book with me of different services, and they might call through to try to find somebody. In one instance, the CARE team worker told me they spent upwards of six hours trying to connect one person with services. So we need to make sure that they are actually getting co-deployed and getting up-to-date information.
Thank you. Council President Nelson, what is your response, especially on this issue of buy-in from the police department and CARE teams? You have 45 seconds.
The fundamental, let's say, everybody agrees, including SPD, the public, council, all the leaders, that, that officers should not be responding to crisis calls, right? So that is why the CARE department was formed and then expanded very rapidly. It has not even been, well, it's almost a year old, and we haven't really seen the evaluation and all the analysis of the kinds of calls that they're responding to. But this is the problem. We're talking about labor negotiations here. And, and until the, until SPAG and the city agree on the division of labor, there are going to be those, those disconnects. And I agree that that is very frustrating. And what we are, and that is going to be an announcement that's coming soon, I assume. But yes, the goal is not having CARE go out with officers, but freeing up officers' time so that the CARE teams can go out and respond on their own.
Thank you, Council President Nelson. My third question is going to start with you, Councilmember Nelson. Almost exactly a year ago, Mayor Harrell signed the Stay Out of Drug Areas and Stay Out of Areas of Prostitution ordinances, most commonly referred to as soap and soda, into law. These passed through the City Council with a vote of eight to one, allowing judges to issue orders preventing people accused of drug or prostitution-related crimes from entering specific areas of the city, like here in the U District or on Aurora. As of about a month ago, Capitol Hill led the way with 41 soda orders. You and your opponent have sparred over these zones in multiple outlets, multiple debates already this campaign season. Candidate Foster has called soap and soda banishment zones and said that they're not effective for getting people housing or treatment. Why did you support them? 90 seconds.
We have got to interrupt the markets that are, that are driving the drug dealing, the, and the, and the sex trafficking and the prostitution that, that has been very difficult with, with the laws already just on the books. And those soap and soda orders are alternatives to incarceration. They say, just stay out of this area. And it requires the cooperation of SPD and also the judges. So it's, it's a lot more complicated. But not doing something else is just a tacit acceptance of the status quo, and that is absolutely not acceptable. When we, when we first discussed this in committee, there was a room full of parents, community members, teachers, that were talking about the situation of young girls being trafficked on Aurora. And, and, and we all see, if we go downtown, some of the activity that is just pernicious down there. And it would be easier to ask people to stay out of this area where their, the conditions exist to fuel the perpetuation of those crisis areas. And so I'm all, I'm a person of all of the above. We need more tools in our toolbox to be able to respond to the, the violence and the exploitation that's going on in our streets. And so that was, those are two new opportunities to really get at the, the situation without ending in arrest or, or jail time. It's simply a, in order to stay out of this area.
Dion Foster, we mentioned your criticisms already of soap and soda. You've also been accused in the past in other outlets and other debates of not having specific proposals proactively offered and criticizing, you know, something that's being tried as a solution. What is your response to that? You have 45 seconds.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, I've actually been very clear that there are solutions that have been put forward that can work, right? So when we look at what's happening, let's say where one of the soaps, or excuse me, where the, one of the soda zones is in the CID, they're in Little Saigon. That community has come together to put together a plan, which is called the FADP Action Plan. That plan has a number of tenants in it that are focused on making sure that the parks are activated, that are making sure that there are people walking around. They have community service workers that they want out there. They are asking for like place-based interventions and treatment that would show up, that should show up in their neighborhood. So there are solutions that are there. Similarly, you know, the audit report that came from the city was clear about saying, we should have place-based interventions, but that a banishment zone is not going to be effective. And I think very much if we're looking at what's happening in, oh.
That's time. Thank you. If you would like, you can have 30 seconds. We'll also give 30 seconds back to Dion Foster. Go ahead.
The situation is so dire in, in Little Saigon and in other places in the city that, yes, all of the above. I am leading the charge on expanding access to on-demand addiction treatment. That is something that we absolutely have to do. Nobody is saying that the, the services that are mentioned in, in actually the, the audit that I ordered and had presented in my, in my committee. But again, there are times when a, a more, when there is a response that is needed because nothing else is working, and we're talking about lives on the line.
30 seconds to you, Dion, for a final wrap-up on this subject.
Yeah, absolutely. So I want to be clear that this isn't working, right? Soap and soda aren't working, and they weren't working when the city had it before. And that information was presented to council. So that's one of the things that I've been clear about is when we look back and we talk about failed policies of the past, soap and soda are not ways to get people directed into treatment. They are not ways to get people directly connected into housing. So saying I need an, I, I believe we do need an all-of-the-above approach, but soap and soda is not part of what should be entailed there because it is not what's going to be effective at getting people connected to the services that they actually need to be able to then, you know, get clean and sober or come inside.
Thank you. Dion Foster, this next question will go to you. Last month, the City Council, including your opponent here, Sarah Nelson, voted to expand the city's Real-Time Crime Center by adding more police cameras in more parts of the city. You have criticized the expansion citing data privacy issues and the risk of ICE and DHS accessing the footage. In response to my inquiry, the Seattle Police Department provided multiple examples of recent investigations into drug offenses, reckless driving, assault and shootings, where the department claims that Real-Time Crime Center cameras aided in investigations, either as evidence that was presented to prosecutors or actually helping with arrests. If there are sufficient protections in place to protect that footage from being turned over to ICE or DHS, if you are comfortable with the privacy issue, would you support the use of law enforcement cameras with the Real-Time Crime Center? You have 90 seconds.
Yeah. So when I look at what, excuse me, when I look at what happened last month with that expansion, it was an expansion of a pilot program before the data from the pilot program came back. It's important for us to note that the city's own CPC, the Community Police Commission, opposed the expansion, as did the ACLU and other civil liberties organizations. So when I look at this moment that we're in, where we have threats from the Trump administration that are, I mean, causing people to live in so much fear that they are afraid to access local services. I am hearing from people who are saying, we are nervous about accessing our food bank. We're trying to get delivery to our home. When we are looking at what happened the very next day, which was the Trump administration asking the State Department of Licensing to hand over their data. And what we are seeing every day in our city and in this country is a complete abandonment of the rule of law, right? So the idea that we think that we can protect this data and ensure that it's not going to end up in the hands of the federal government, I think is not taking into account the consistent overreach that we are seeing. So I am very skeptical of the idea that we will, that we will be able to protect that data from that federal overreach, which is part of the reason that I opposed that expansion.
Okay, just really quickly, because we have about 15 seconds left. If there were no more privacy concerns, do you have other concerns about the cameras? Or was it primarily a privacy concern issue? And let's, let's do another 20 seconds here.
Sure. It's both a privacy issue, and it's a, it's a question of what's actually going to be effective at prevention, right? So for me, I'm thinking about, obviously, we are, like I said, we're in this moment where we are seeing extreme overreach. But I also want to be clear that the things that I think help people, you know, get connected to services or prevent people from committing crimes are making sure that they have access to jobs, making sure that they have access to housing, making sure that people have food in their bellies and that they're safe. So for me, I want to be focused on City Council on things that I believe are going to help us continue to bring down crime and prevent folks from getting in that place in the first place.
Thank you. City Council President Sarah Nelson, you have 45 seconds here. You did vote in favor of expanding the Real-Time Crime Center cameras. What about those data privacy risks that candidate Foster has, has illuminated? Those are, those are really present in people's minds right now. What's your response to that?
I, I hear that. And what's really present in people's minds is, is, is kids getting shot in the areas where those expansions are proposed and where they will happen. The very, two days after we passed that law, someone was shot in the neck on Capitol Hill. Had there been a camera there, we might have been able to get some evidence to be able to know who did that. Blue cities across the country have, have implemented a, the, what we call the Real-Time Crime Center. And so it is, like I said before, we need to use all the tools in the toolbox to keep people safe. And I will, I will also note that every, that the council members that voted most strongly in favor of this come from communities where they are, they see their people dying and disappearing at much higher rates than a lot of other populations. And so really, I take an oath to protect the health, safety, and well-being of my constituents. And I will, that is one more, that is one more tool to use.
Thank you. You are listening to Soundside on KUOW. I'm Libby Dankman. We're hosting our debate for Position Nine on the Seattle City Council. Candidates Dion Foster and incumbent Sarah Nelson are here with me in studio along with a live audience. It's time for everybody's favorite subject, taxes. Seattle's facing a projected $150 million budget shortfall, not as bad as first thought, but still not great. We're going to flip the order of answers here, so I'll start with Dion Foster. You previously advocated for a statewide capital gains tax, and you've said that you would support a citywide capital gains tax as well. Opponents of the state's capital gains tax have argued that it could push wealthy people out of the state. In 2023 and 2024, receipts for the capital gains tax did not come close to matching the initial year $840 million revenue, although the question is, did people just get better at working their money around the tax? Or did they actually leave the state? We've heard similar arguments about city taxes. For example, Geekwire reported that Amazon had accelerated hiring in Bellevue and other cities soon after the Jumpstart tax went into effect. That's the payroll tax on big businesses. We don't know exactly how many jobs that represents, and Amazon had opposed the tax. Are you concerned about new taxes on the wealthy and whether they could push jobs away from Seattle? And is there a limit to the kinds of new taxes that you would support? 90 seconds.
Great. So there's a number of things I want to bring up here. And one is that, you know, when we passed the statewide capital gains tax, I believe at the time, there were 42 other states that had a statewide capital gains tax. So we were really closing a loophole in our tax system. Second, Washington has the 49th most regressive tax code in the entire country. And we're only 49th because we passed that statewide capital gains tax. So when I look locally and I see our budget shortfall, and I see at the same time, tax breaks that are happening at the federal level because of the Trump administration, and I see, you know, we have very limited tools in our state that we can use, I believe that a local capital gains tax is one of the tools that we can use to close that loophole, to make sure that we actually can fund our critical services. And these are services that unfortunately may see additional hits. We are looking at people who are being pushed off of Medicaid and Medicare right now. We are looking at people who are losing access to EBT because of changes at the federal level. So I want to make sure at the local level that we are supporting smart new revenue solutions that can help make sure that our city stays whole. And one of the things I'll just highlight again is, at the same time, we may be looking at these new sources of progressive revenue locally, these are folks who are also going to be experiencing probably tax breaks because of the changes of the federal policy. So I think it's important that we are clear about our need to protect our most vulnerable residents when it comes to the next four years.
Thank you. Sarah Nelson, you have 45 seconds here. You voted against a citywide capital gains tax when it came up in November. Do you support any new taxes to balance the budget?
In fact, I do, and I did vote for a new, I did vote for the BNO tax that will go to the voters. And we're about to vote on a, on the mayor's public safety tax. And I am in favor of that because I know what it will be, what it will pay for. Because I put forward a list of, of services that will expand access to addiction and recovery-based housing and a whole long list of other services that we need to stabilize. So I am not against progressive revenue, but I am, but too many people talk only about revenue and not about results. I am hyper-focused on the outcomes. I need to know how that money will be spent and how it's different from what we're already doing right now.
May I add to that?
Okay, if you want to take 30 seconds, then we'll give 30 seconds back to, to Sarah Nelson as well. Go ahead.
Yeah, I do think it's important that we, we highlight that the City Council did consider a municipal capital gains tax last year that former council member Moore brought forward. And there was a spending plan that was associated with that, and the council member voted against it. And that's part of the reason why that local capital gains tax failed. I also think it's important to note that early on in the campaign, what I heard my opponent say was, she was open to a municipal capital gains tax. In recent debates, I've heard you say, you're no longer open to that. So I've seen a lot of changes in this position. I also want to be clear that on council, you know, we had the opportunity to fund our social housing developer and a decision to make between Prop 1A and Prop 1B. I supported Prop 1A because I believe we need to actually fund our social housing developer. My opponent did not.
I think that the seagull was a fan of 1B or 1A or something. I'm not sure. 30 seconds to you, response to what we just heard from Dion Foster.
I understand that if you're, if you're not in contact often with our Office of Forecasting, you might not know how unstable in the capital gains, the municipal capital gains would be. And the, a big problem with it is that we do not have any idea how much revenue it will generate. It would, the, the anticipation is anywhere between $18 and $31 million. That is not a, that is not, that's not a solid enough amount to be able to plan any kind of program around. And what I said just a moment ago is that I will support a revenue if I know what it's going to pay for. We don't just decide that we need more money. We need to decide what we're going to do with it and what problems we're trying to solve.
Thank you. We're going to stay on the subject of taxes, and this one is going to go to you, Council President Nelson, on the subject of what taxes go to. A few weeks ago, Mayor Bruce Harrell resulted his, three, two, one. A few weeks ago, Mayor Bruce Harrell released his proposed budget, which would once again pull in a large chunk of revenue from the city's Jumpstart tax to help avoid major service cuts. This tax was originally intended for specific purposes, primarily affordable housing and climate initiatives. Labor leaders and others have pushed back against the tax being diverted from, for the general fund. Council President Nelson, on the campaign trail in 2021, you opposed the Jumpstart tax. Since then, you have voted in favor of diverting the funds to balance the budget. Why did you vote in favor of that diversion? Do you worry that this does undermine trust from voters who say, hey, when a tax is enacted for one thing, that it should go for paying for that one thing? You have 90 seconds.
Well, when council changes laws all the time, we amend passed laws all the time. And so it's, it's not unusual to, to say, our conditions have changed. We need to, we need to use that money for something else. What it comes down to is I voted to use that money for other things, so we did not have to fire people. That was the choice. The choice was, was eliminate services, eliminate FTEs, or use that money for other things. It came down to that quite simply. And so we have to sometimes make very hard choices about what the revenue that we have and what we're going to spend it on. And, and my choice was certainly with keeping our people hired in the jobs that they're providing for these, for the people of Seattle.
And I'll just turn it back to you, Dion Foster, here. If you are on council right now, would you vote to divert Jumpstart to balance the budget? Why or why not?
So this is a great opportunity to go back to the point about a capital gains tax and the fluctuations, which I'm very familiar with. So one of the opportunities that we have to make sure that we are protecting from firing people and cutting services is you could do something like pass that capital gains tax and bring that, those resources into the general fund as a, as a means for us to be able to have more money going back to its intended purposes from the Jumpstart tax. Every council has used a portion of the Jumpstart tax to fill a part of the, of the budget since it has been passed. But I believe that if we continue to actually have diverse and progressive revenue sources, we can get more of that money back to its intended purpose, which was in housing. It was in the green new economy and making sure that we are dealing with climate change. So that's one way that we can actually lessen the diversion of those resources.
30 seconds.
Thank you. Sure, I'll give you 30 because you also had some time left over from your first answer. So this will be your 30 from the first answer.
Another option, not another option, but an additional thing that we should always do is evaluate the performance of our investments. And the, we have a responsibility to ensure that what we are spending money on is working, that the outcomes that we anticipate are actually realizing. And if they're not, then we also need to consider reevaluating those investments. And, and, and that is responsible government as well. We don't necessarily always have to be going for additional sources. We have a responsibility first and foremost, no matter if there are lots of options for additional revenue or zero options, that is our job, and we have got to do that, so.
Thank you. Our next question, that was 30 seconds that she had left over from her first answer. I think we have to move on. So we're going to take a move to our next question, which is coming from a listener named Margaret. And it gets to the management of council meetings and public comment. Quote from Margaret, "During Councilmember Nelson's time as council chair, there have been several council meetings where longstanding norms of extending public comment time on contentious issues were not followed. Comments were cut off, and unhappy residents who had come to speak left even more unhappy. In some cases, the chair chose to move the public in-person council meeting into a private Zoom session. How does the council president view the public's right to speak and provide input to city councils' work?" Council President Nelson, I want to give you 90 seconds to respond to what Margaret has to say there.
I totally understand her point, and that is my responsibility to ensure that everyone can speak and that everyone has equal time, and that we also get can speak and that everyone has equal time, and that we also get through the items on our agenda. And when the behavior gets disrespectful, when people are yelling down other people, then, and when my efforts to restore order do not succeed, then I have to consider moving our meeting to another location in order to finish our business. There was one meeting where we were waiting, there was a very important thing on our, we were going to honor George Fleming for all the work that he had done on affordable housing. And there was a group of protesters that refused to let us go forward with our meeting. And so that was one of the cases where, you know, that things got pretty tense. But I have a responsibility to ensure that everybody can have the equal amount of time. And then when, but when the, when the commenters were preventing other people from speaking, yelling on top of other public commenters, yelling at city council members, there is a point at which I have to decide that order cannot be restored within the chambers, and we had to continue by Zoom in our offices.
Thank you. Dion Foster, I want to give you 90 seconds for a slightly related but different question here, and that has to do with the work of the council and the deliberative process. You identify as a progressive during Seattle's years with a more progressive makeup of the city council. The word "Seattle Process" got bandied about. This was a criticism and also kind of a loving term in some cases. Basically, things moved kind of slowly. Lots of dialogue, working groups, surveys, meetings, pilots. Everybody's voices were heard, but sometimes it took a long time to get to a decision. Do you like the deliberate and inclusive nature of the Seattle Process? Or is there a time and place for pushing things through more quickly if a little less thoroughly discussed? 90 seconds for your take on that.
Sure. And just going to the previous question, I think it's important to highlight, things didn't just get tense at council. People were arrested for protesting and for speaking in council chambers. So I think that's an important thing to clarify. So yeah.
If you want to take 30 seconds, we're just going to have to go back and forth if we're going to make a claim about the previous answer. So you want to take 30 seconds to respond to that, and then we move on to the Seattle Process question? Is that okay?
Sure. So start that over. Okay, got it. Yeah, so I think going back to the previous question, it's important to note that there wasn't just things getting tense at council, there were people who were arrested for protesting at council. And I've certainly seen people come to City Hall and be very vibrant and excited, but this is a city where I think we need to make sure that we are protecting people's First Amendment rights, and that includes their right to protest and to speak in dissent.
30 seconds to you, Councilmember Nelson, about specifically people getting arrested at council, police being called.
Once, First Amendment right does not include the right to disrupt a meeting and to prevent our business from going forward. And like I said before, there was, there were many items on our agenda that we had to get to, and we had to honor George Fleming's family. And so, and there were some very aged people that had come to that meeting, and there were council members that were expressing fear. And so, yes, we had several recesses, and that was the end result. So sometimes we have to, you know, continue on in whatever way we can, but the ones, First Amendment rights do not extend to disrupting a meeting and preventing other people from speaking.
Thank you. Candidate Foster, back to the question about the deliberative process and the sometimes critical and loving phrase of the Seattle Process. What is your take on consensus versus action?
Yeah. So I definitely think of myself as a coalition builder, and that means being able to hear perspectives from people whom I agree with and people who I don't agree with. And I will say, I think that is one of the strengths of when we create a workgroup around a particular issue that needs to be solved, is you have the opportunity to sort of front-load those disagreements, and you have the opportunity to make, to do that negotiation. So when I think of my potential role as a council member, I absolutely see part of it being making sure that we are doing smart and effective stakeholder-ing that gets to hear from people who have diverse and dissenting opinions, so that that is baked into the legislative process upfront. I think that is, that's the way I think of the Seattle Process.
Thank you. And we are running out of time for this debate, so we're going to move on to a fun little section we like to call the lightning round. I think that crow just got hit by lightning. That was--
Did you answer that last question?
That was a question that was specifically geared to Dion, and so we are going to move on just because we're running out of time. Thank you. So lightning round, and these are going to go really quickly. We're hoping for brief answers. These are like one word or a couple of words. Otherwise, we might, again, hear that seagull or crow that just got hit by lightning. First question, does the Seattle Police Department currently receive sufficient funding? Yes or no? Council President Nelson, you first.
Yes.
Dion Foster?
Yes.
Question two, one name only, Katie Wilson or Bruce Harrell? Dion Foster first, and then Sarah Nelson.
Katie. I'm not going there.
That's undecided or--
I'm going to go with Bruce.
Okay. Question number three, Council President Nelson, you've talked about, and I find this to be really inspiring, as somebody with addiction in her own family, you've talked about your sober journey. In honor of that commitment, what is your favorite NA beverage? And this could be something that you make at home or that you purchase at an establishment or anything like that.
It would have to be the NA, Fremont Brewing NA IPA.
I could have predicted that one. Fremont IPA, NA. Dion Foster, your favorite NA beverage?
I like the Athletic Brewing that comes in the orange can. I don't know what it's called.
Athletic Brewing Orange Can. Okay, that, the company is sad that you don't know the name. Okay, so question number four, President Trump has called Seattle a crime-infested hellscape. I think we can all agree that public safety is important. Also, I don't see hellscape reflected in my experience of the city. So if you had an afternoon to show President Trump the real Seattle, where would you go? Dion Foster first.
Oh, great question. I would do a light rail ride from the airport, maybe get off on Beacon Hill, walk to the library, visit some of the small businesses that are there, trounce over to Jefferson Park and see the skaters and all the families that are out enjoying the city.
Council President Nelson, where would you go to take President Trump to show him the real Seattle?
I'd get him on a bicycle, and we'd ride--
Would it be a naked bicycle ride, like in Portland? Or clothed?
You know, that can be his choice, you know? But I think that a bike is a great way to see our city and travel through a lot of neighborhoods and see the water, lots of different kinds of water, yes.
Two-part question here, breaking the rules. Have you seen the YouTube page, The Seattle Channel, which my producers had to tell me about? It is apparently puppets that lip-sync real city council audio. And if you have seen it, do you think it's funny? Council President Nelson, have you seen it? Do you think it's funny?
No, I haven't, but I'm sure it is.
Dion Foster?
I've seen it. I think it's hilarious.
Okay. People are way cooler than me who have seen it. Hot, this is a final lightning round question, everybody. Hot rat summer, it took the city by storm. What is the next piece of Seattle public art that should get a big online fan base? Dion Foster?
Okay, I'm very biased here. So my co-parent does public art in the city, so I'm going to have to say--
This is like the Fremont Brewing question.
No, I'm sorry. So, and I have to give him a shout-out. He actually just won the Nettie Award for his art for murals around the city. So I'm going to say going and seeing Craig's art around the city.
Okay, Craig, well, can we have a full name?
Oh, Craig Kondif.
Okay, that was the plug. We had a plug earlier, so we have a plug here. What is your answer, the public art that you think should get a big online following?
I believe there are now these big, huge, like 10 by 10 square paintings downtown, well, actually more in Pioneer Square, that are, that you can go see actually get painted. It's a new program, and they don't get graffitied. And it's kind of an anti-graffiti effort, but it's also a Pioneer Square beautification program. And so I suggest anybody go down there and look for those huge things, you'll know what I'm talking about.
Nice. All right, we are at the end of our debate for position nine. We flipped a coin at the beginning. Producer Sarah flipped a coin, and the order for our closing statements will go Dion Foster, then Sarah Nelson, and you have one minute, Dion Foster.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for having me. I am so excited to run for this position because I want to make sure that this is a city that's going to work for all of us. We didn't get a chance to talk too much about housing affordability today, but that is one of the issues that is most near and dear to my heart. And we have an opportunity next year on Part II of the Comprehensive Plan to make sure that we are building enough housing. We have an opportunity through making sure that we are getting Jump Start back to its intended purpose to continue our investments in affordable housing. And so much of that is what brought me to decide to run for city council. So I'm ready to get to work on day one, working on housing, working on safety, working on bringing our neighbors inside. I'm incredibly proud to have the endorsement of Congresswoman Pramila Jayapal, of MLK Labor, of more than 30 local elected officials around our region who are putting their faith and their trust in me to represent our whole city, and I hope to earn the vote of our listeners. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Nelson, you have one minute.
Well, I am running for reelection to build on the progress that we've made on some of our constituents' top priorities, public safety. What I'm hearing from my opponent is a lot, what I heard from the previous council, no on this, no on this, no on this. We have a lot more, we have a lot of distance to go on public safety, but we're getting there. I am excited to continue my work to expand online, I mean, access to on-demand treatment because that is fueling our public safety and our chronic homelessness problems, and I'm leading on that. We have delivered results for the people of Seattle, but there's so far, there's farther to go, and we can't stop now. We cannot go backwards. I'm proud to be endorsed by The Seattle Times, the Seattle Building Trades Council, ironworkers, electricians, the Amalgamated Transit Union, which are the people that drive our buses and our light rail. They see what's going on all over the city, and they are putting their trust in me to make things better. Also, the firefighters, what they're experiencing and seeing, they are putting their faith in my ability to keep, to keep us moving forward. And then there's, I have other, check my website to go see the long list, including Senate Majority Jamie Peterson, et cetera. But I am looking forward to continuing to build on the progress and make the city safer, better, and more equitable.
Thank you. That was Council President Sarah Nelson. You also heard from candidate Dion Foster. Candidates for your Seattle City Council position nine seat. You can find all of our election coverage at kuwow.org and the Soundside podcast feed. I'm Libby Dankman.